The Crystal Council Meeting, first online, too hard at this time. Let's start with roll call.
Are you?
Councilmember LaRoche?
Here.
Councilmember Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Banks?
Here.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Here.
Councilmember Deschler?
Here.
And Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
In addition, we have staff, present, Ann Norris, Kim Terrace, Troy Gilchrist, John L. Home, and Chrissy Saris.
You have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. We're going to start with a little statement. Based on the statement that I issued under Minnesota statute, section thirteen D point zero two one, the city council will be conducting its meeting by electronic means until further notice. That work to establish a means to allow the city council to be electronic and to provide the public enough to be to mount meetings as they are preferred.
I continue to take some precautions.
Um, we have two resolutions that were added to tonight's agenda. We've got an emergency. The first is a resolution extending the declaration of local emergency I issued today. And the second is a resolution authorizing the use of electronic documents as. I have received copies of both of these resolutions before the meeting. Um, with that, uh, I'm going, I missed the Pledge of Allegiance. Why don't we go ahead and do that at this time? So if I'm not alone, please, somebody unmute themselves. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America. To the republic of the United States. And the ocean, God, their God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all. That was amazing.
You said pretty little bar there, Jared.
That was something else. All right. Uh, we do have an agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to pass the agenda. State your name if you want to be recognized so we can, uh, before you say something. So looking for a motion for the agenda.
Nancy LaRoche.
I heard Nancy LaRoche. Looking for a second?
I'll second.
I can second Therese. Um, I have a favor, please say.
I have to do a roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, this is, um, adoption of the agenda as met with the inclusion of the additional.
Correct. Asim, thank you for that clarification. So, uh, Kim, are you doing the roll call on each one?
Yes, so we will be voting on the motion to suspend the council rules and to add two resolutions to the agenda as per regular agenda five point four and five point one. Roll call vote. Councilmember Budaszewski.
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, now that I will read the consent agenda in the record. First is the approval of the minutes for the following dates, the city council work session from March tenth, two thousand twenty. Uh, and then the city council meeting from that same date, city work session from March twelfth, two thousand twenty. And there's approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. Uh, approval of a resolution extending the following donations, twenty-five hundred from Crystal, the Crystal Airport Open House, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-two cents for donation boxes for Crystal Police Explorers, five thousand from the West American Fire Relief Association for the twenty-twenty products, and five hundred from the West American Fire Relief Association for the Crystal Police Explorers. Uh, thank you, everybody, for all those contributions. And then the next item is approval of a resolution supporting a grant application, the Panaman Youth Sports Grant for the twenty-five thousand for the playing area at Fair School Park. Uh, that's awesome. That's a good one. I was happy to read that one. Uh, next item is approval of a temporary on sale liquor license for a social event on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty submitted by the church neighbor after this located seventy-three oh one fifty-six to Evanor. And then approval of a temporary on sale license application for the same social event at Sam Red. Oh, you did it, seventy-three oh one fifty-six to Evanor. Uh, that's for May thirtieth, two thousand twenty. That is a different amount of time I spoke. Uh, reset is approval of to authorize Evanco, this district initiative grant application for the, 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 the program. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
Julie moves the approval to, uh, approve the consent agenda as read.
Thank you, Julie. Looking for a second?
I will second Therese.
Therese, thank you. All members in, oh, let's do roll call.
Yep, so we will be voting on the consent agenda as read. Roll call vote. Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
And Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have open forum. If we have anyone online who would like to speak during open forum, it would be wise at this point to be heard. Um, do we know if we have any question to speak during open forum? Um, Kim, do you know of anybody?
No, I do not.
Okay, Matt, can you tell?
Looking through the list now, I don't see any unidentified numbers.
Okay. All right, we're assumed that nobody would be during open forum. Um, if somebody does happen to bring themselves known, we will revisit it just based on our new technology here. Let's move on to regular agenda. Um, oh, great. Where's my page for this one? Didn't do my normal due diligence, but I'm sorry. Does somebody have the list they can read into the record for me?
I do. Nancy.
Go ahead.
Okay, here is the list of expenditures over twenty-five thousand dollars first. Logist for large application support and hardware replacement costs for eighty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-four dollars. And second, Mintera for employee and city required contributions for the March sixth, twenty-twenty payday for sixty-one thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total of expenditures over twenty-five thousand dollars is one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety-two point one two.
Thank you, Nancy. So, um, you're, you're, uh, Olga's thinking right now. How come my list number had that support? I'm thinking. Are, are there any, are there any discussion, do you want to discuss, I have any questions on your concerns? All right, hearing no one. Um, looking for a motion on that?
Olga will make a motion to approve.
Olga? John?
I second your motion.
Thank you. All members for a roll call, please.
Yep. Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Council, or Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
And Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Motion is carried, passed.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have Mark Ray, our headquarters director, to address the council on the twenty-twenty's Haven Project. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, everybody.
Matt, you pulled up the presentation quick?
No, you don't know.
All right.
You, excuse me, you want to say slide then when to change it? Yeah, that works. All right, slide. All right, so as we've been discussing, this year's mill and overlay program, uh, is roughly six point two five miles from Iowa one hundred on the east side, thirty-six Avenue North, roughly when that got across to thirty-seven. Slide. So about seven percent of the entire city, just to put this number in perspective, uh, most of it is going to be mill and overlays. It's a one-half inch mill and overlay, removing the existing asphalt, putting it back along with spot curb replacements, curb ramp upgrades for pedestrian accessibility. Uh, we also are going to reconstructing a very short hundred and forty-foot section of Florida Avenue. It's the dead end, it's thirty-sixth. Only two properties are adjacent to this, and we've been actually talking to them for, I think, pretty close to a year now, uh, just getting their input on this project. Slide. Budget for the project was just over one point five million. We opened bids last week. The low bid was part construction, one point three four million dollars. So we're under the budget by just shy of two hundred thousand dollars or about two percent. Again, this project is being funded using the street maintenance fund and has not had any assessments for our residents. Slide. Here's a list of the total, um, bids, or put it as you can see, it ranged from the one point three up to one point six million dollars. Uh, but they're really tight there on the low end, so that's good C. Obviously, there's a lot of competition for this project. Slide. So request the council licenseedings, the motion to approve the council resolution authorizing the contract with part construction uh, for this project. And then once that's done, we'll let me with the contractor, um, try to figure out a schedule and communicate that with residents.
All right, thank you, Mark. Uh, questions from Nelson, please?
Nancy.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Mark, I have a question. Um, you said the work is scheduled to be completed by October sixteenth. Would that date potentially be delayed depending on the contractor and weather and other items?
Um, yeah, so right now in the contract, it's on four. Um, that could be changed based on how this weather goes this summer. However, with the mill and overlay, it's not as impacted by weather because there is some asphalt remaining below the road while, while the work takes place. I would say the bigger thing right now is actually going to be staffing locations with coronavirus. And if this contractor can, can get the work, get moving, um, assuming asphalt plants don't shut down and kind of all the other supply things that'll feed into this project. That's the bigger one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question. Have we used this contractor before?
We have. Uh, it has been a while since they've done work in the city. I think they're actually a subcontractor, though, uh, on the phase sixteen reconstruction project.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, looking for a motion on this item?
Nancy.
Nancy, go ahead.
I move to, um, pass the motion as written. I'm sorry, I lost my paperwork just now. I was hoping to look through this and the page where the motion is on there, so apologies.
All right.
Ah, I found it. Here we go. I made a, a motion to adopt the following resolution, number twenty-twenty, the award contract for twenty-twenty street res servicing and reconstruction project.
Thank you, Nancy. Looking for a second on that?
I'll second.
Brendan? Thank you, Brendan. All right. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Next is item five three. And, you know, our director here to, our recognition director here to address the council on the HVAC improvements. Go ahead, John.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, I'm here tonight to talk about HVAC improvements at the Crystal Community Center. Uh, over the past number of years, we've been making energy efficiency type changes with the installation of things like LED lights in the gyms and motion sensors. And HVAC controls is one of the next things on our, on our list here. Uh, we did have some issues a year ago with some things freezing because the air handlers were left in an open position. Um, the system couldn't adjust as well. So this is, uh, making some very needed improvements to, uh, our old HVAC system. And it's, uh, the, the quote is for thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And that is to our, which, uh, was our, uh, the company that works on our HVAC. We have a service contract with them. And they also provide the, the computer graphics and such that monitor our system. So having them do the work, it will integrate nicely with, um, our current, uh, computerized system. So, uh, I've opened for questions on that. I should say that we're diligent as we're going through all of these energy efficiency improvements to seeking rebates. And what we often do is we'll take a rebate and then apply it to the next project. So you see how they're comfortable with it on, um, in the budget and now some recent projects that will be rebased forward. So, if I have any questions?
All right, thank you, John.
I have a resolution for your consideration.
Yep, thank you, John. Any questions for John on this item? All right. No questions? Looking for a motion on this one, the resolution?
Olga, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Olga.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, uh, for an agreement with UHL.
Julie, one second.
All right, thank you, Julie. Uh, let's do roll call.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
And Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you, John. All right, next is Troy Gilchrist, the city attorney. He is going to address the, uh, the declarations, the emergency declarations. Troy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So you, uh, received a copy of this resolution. Um, what this, frankly, a number of cities, um, have been doing is, uh, there was, you know, some debate as to whether or not, uh, individual cities, uh, need to have their mayors issue a declaration of local emergency. Uh, over, over the last week and a half or whatever this has been, there's been kind of a growing consensus that it's, um, kind of a interstate and sorry sort of approach to this, just to make sure that all the, uh, emergency plans have been activated. Uh, and so, uh, really, a, a number of cities in the metropolitan area are doing this and are, are having the mayors enact a mayor, uh, uh, a declaration of local emergency, which the mayor did do. Thing is, under the statute, when a mayor does that, it's only valid for three days, for up to three days, unless the city, within that period, city council agrees to extend it. Uh, and so that's what this resolution does. It recognizes that a local emergency has been, uh, declared. Uh, it consents to that declaration and extends it essentially until further action of the council, since we don't know how long, frankly, this emergency is going to be, you know, in effect. Um, and, and what it does, um, is really, it, it authorizes staff, uh, to work with the council, to implement the emergency plans, essentially to do what it needs to do to respond to, to the emergency. Uh, the city manager, um, in, in Crystal and in other cities, frankly, um, doing, making decisions such as closing buildings and things like that. So those are the sorts of decisions that are being supported by this action to say, we understand that you need to take certain actions that are obviously out of the ordinary, you know, in order to protect staff and the public and to prevent the spread of the virus. So this is just, uh, a resolution that, uh, in use in, in effect, the, uh, emergency declaration issued by the mayor and his support of, of staff and the implementation of the emergency procedures, um, that are needed to respond.
All right, any questions for Troy?
We voted to extend it. How long is it in place for our vote to end? We said it expires in three days.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council member, no, just correction. The mayor's declaration, which was a separate action, it individually, only the mayor has the authority to, to issue a ma, a local declaration. He's done that, but by law, um, by statute, that declaration is only valid for three days. Uh, and so what this resolution does is says, you agree with that declaration and continue it. So, uh, once you adopt, if, if the council adopts this resolution, that means the emergency, the local emergency declaration will be in effect until further action of the city council.
Okay.
So basically, when the city council acts to repeal it. So it'd be a point at which we are, have all, you know, the governors, uh, released the, the statewide emergency and, and if the council is comfortable with releasing the local emergency, then there would be a resolution acting to say this.
So we adopt this resolution, what does that mean? What is that doing for, uh, what are we doing as a city with this resolution in place?
So, Mr. Mayor, council member, what this is doing is, is, um, ensuring that the city has full access, uh, to, one, its emergency powers, uh, two, to implement and exercise its, um, emergency plans that have already been developed and adopted, uh, and, and three, to, to make it clear that staff has the discretion to do things like and has already done in, in closing public buildings to the pub, or excuse me, city buildings to the public, doing those sorts of decisions, allowing staff to work remotely. You know, there are those out of the ordinary things that need to be done to, to respond to this thing.
Uh, Troy, is it, it's true that we kind of had it to do that for this meeting too, is it?
Yes, uh, well, Mr. Mayor, correct. The, um, the timing of the declaration has to be such that, uh, you know, three days goes by awfully fast. So, so having issued the declaration just, I believe, today, uh, then that's where now we have to do it because if, if the council doesn't act on this this evening, then the declaration will expire and you have to reissue it.
All right, anybody else? All right. We have two, it looks like we have two declarations here. Is that correct, Troy?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, no, just right, right now it's just one resolution. Uh, I'll, I'll deal with the others. So you, you have the, the mayoral declaration. You issue on your own.
Okay.
And then what you have before you now is a resolution adopted pursuant to Minnesota statute twelve twenty-nine, extending the period of the ma, mayor that declared local emergency.
Okay. Will it need a, a, a motion on that resolution other than Troy?
Nancy LaRoche?
All right, thank you, Nancy. Looking for a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Therese. Let's do a roll call. Go.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons? Councilmember Parsons?
Aye. Sorry, I did not.
No problem. Motion carries.
That's everyone?
That is everybody.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Please. All right. That is it for our regular agenda. Do we have some announcements?
Nope, you have one more item.
One more.
One more?
We have one more item.
Yep, there it is. Good thing I say that, so you guys can catch me. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so this is the other, uh, added to the amended agenda. Uh, the question was raised regarding, um, some practical outcome of, of all this inter, of the, um, social distancing and, uh, remote working and things like that, trying to limit, uh, people coming together during this time. And so, uh, what this resolution does is a resolution authorizing the use of electronic documents as signatures. The city technically already has some of this authority, but this is obviously, um, a change in circumstances and a change in, in how the city conducts its business. Obviously, you're, you're not going to be engaged in, in chuckling papers quite the same way as, as before, or maybe even not having the mayor come in and sign them, or the documents that appear to be lines at the end of meetings. Uh, and so what this does is it authorizes the use, uh, by the city, uh, and, and its officers, frankly, for the use of electronic documents, electronic signatures, uh, to conduct city business. Uh, and, and, uh, and again, there's, there's a statute that already allows you to use a facsimile signature, which is essentially a stamp. But then there's also the Uniform Electronic Transaction Act that's been around for a number of years that allows, uh, electronic documents. So maybe you probably engaged in that if you've ever bought or sold a home recently. There's, there's a, a number of online things where you can click and, and have automated signatures. So that's all authorized under this act. What this is doing is allowing the city to, to, uh, expand its, its, uh, use of electronic documents and signatures. Uh, again, just so folks don't have to come in and actually physically sign things and hand over back and forth. So that's, in, in essence, what this does, um, I crafted this in somewhat of a sense of, uh, with the emergency in mind. You'll notice the third whereas, or the third line, that's once the emergency is over, the city council may reevaluate, modify, or repeal this authorization as it determines appropriate. So I just wanted to make clear that, you know, this is kind of a hurry up and let's get this done so business can continue electronically to the extent possible. But, you know, if for some reason, once, once the, um, the directives not to come in personal contact with folks, those are way, we certainly turn it back to kind of normal as far as how, how documents are typically signed. But for now, this is just enhances that electronic process. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Troy. Questions for Troy? Thanks to make here, no questions for Troy? So, uh, who would like to do?
Julie.
Julie, thank you.
I'll make a resolution adopted pursuant to Minnesota statute, section twelve point two nine, extending, oh, no, never mind. Resolution authorizing the use of electronic documents as signatures.
Listen, John? John, go ahead.
I second your motion.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budaszewski?
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
And Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you, Kim.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that is, that, that is it for our agenda now, we'll go to the announcements. Uh, the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, April seventh, at seven P.M. In the council chambers at City Hall via, or via electronic means, of course. The city's city council will hold its next awards session on Thursday, April sixteenth, at six, in Conference Room A, or via electronic means. Um, I haven't, haven't even come into the pledge of allegiance right now. Uh, however, we might, we'd like it better if we have a guest person just saying it by himself. The city council meeting and work sessions are, uh, via electronic means. Uh, encouraging previous meetings are available for viewing and listening on our website. Uh, with that, Anna, can you talk a little bit about what that might look like on this meeting and potentially for future meetings?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, CCA believes that they can take the recordings from this Zoom meeting and it will be, uh, on our website, just like any other council meeting. It'll look a little different, but it will be available for viewing, listening.
Awesome, thank you. Alright, um, any other announcements from the council members?
Nancy, I, I just, uh, if I could, um, I just wanted to, uh, make a shout out to some of our local businesses, our resident staff, city staff, uh, re, you know, churches, everyone who's been getting together in this, um, very unique time, uh, to support each other, to get out and communicate, gather with each other and connect. Uh, it's been amazing to see on social media and even in neighborhoods, when people getting together and create voice to keep in touch and check in on each other. So, thank you, very proud.
Thank you, Nancy. Anybody else? Anybody else? Alright. I'd like to say a little bit too, uh, in terms of how things are going, I guess, in our own community. Um, I've been spending a lot of time at, uh, Trinity Shelf, uh, where they're getting rid of an awful lot of, of food that's coming from local businesses and restaurants that have closed. Uh, the food is, there's just an immense amount of food. Uh, they had over fifteen hundred vehicles come through on Saturday, and a bunch on, uh, I think it was Friday night as well. At least been fifteen hundred, uh, vehicles getting food for multiple families. Most of the people were getting for three families or more, from their neighbors. So, our neighbors are really looking out for the people who are shut in. And, and that's, that's really, but the, that whole, the whole idea of government closing down restaurants has created just a, a, a plethora of fresh foods. They held another one tonight, um, from three till dark, and they will continue doing that. I want people to know and look for that, uh, either on the Trinity Village, Facebook, you can always find it on my Facebook, Jim Adams, the Crystal Mayor. Um, but it's, it's just, my heart bled for just the number of businesses that have gone, uh, who are closing their doors, excuse me, and how, you know, how difficult this is for them, they're actually selling their, some of their, some of them are already selling their, their equipment. And that was a week ago that some people are trying to get rid of their equipment. So, it's kind of a sad state that we're in and, and the, the efforts that were really, as the federal government and state government are having very direct and immediate, you know, effect on our own city and our own businesses in our city. And I, I just, you know, if, if we can get that food to people before it spoils, I, I'm just ecstatic that, that there's organizations in the city and around our city that are doing that food rescue and doing the distribution. Uh, these types of, of, of shelves are being done where, uh, there's no touch. It's just people open their trunks and they put it in their trunks or they put it in their backseat for them. So, it's, it's, there's, there's no hand-to-hand contact, so, um, I'm just, I'm just amazed at, at the outreach. Most people from response on Facebook is, how can I help, how can I help, how can I help? Um, quite honestly, uh, there's a core group of volunteers right now that are doing it. They're trying to keep their isolation amongst themselves as well. If there's a need for additional help, um, they will, Trinity Shelf will be reaching out and asking for that. But at this time, they pretty much have it contained as far as their volunteer and, um, that kind of wrap it up. Brendan, did you have anything to add on that?
Uh, no, you covered it.
Okay, awesome. Anything else? Alright, let's, um, we'll, we'll be in contact, let's go, let's have a motion for adjournment, John?
No move.
What do you? Who is that? Julie, a second. I guess we need to vote on for adjournment.
Councilmember Budaszewski.
Aye.
Councilmember Deschler.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
And Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
You, uh, motion carries.
Alright, everybody, try to keep down positive things during this time and have a great week, we'll talk to you soon.
Alright, goodnight.
Right?
Goodnight.